I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order at this time. The invitation tonight will be conducted by Commissioner Amy Dowrumpel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you would join us.
May we pray. Lord, thank you for the blessings that we've received today, and thank you for all the citizens that are gathered here tonight. And we just pray that you would give us your wisdom and guidance to make the decisions tonight that would best serve the citizens of Lee County. Go with us and lead us all safely home. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
(Inaudible)
First, we need to look at the agenda as it has been provided to each of us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Are you talking about the consent agenda?
The consent, no, just talking about the, are there any additions?
Any additions?
Uh-huh, or subtraction?
Just something I want to pull from the consent agenda.
That's, okay.
Is that next? Did I get out of order?
No, this is fine.
Okay.
What is it that you'd like to pull?
I just have some questions, where is it? On item F, I'd like to have that pulled.
Okay. Anything else?
I just have a simple clarification question on one of the consent agenda items. Can I handle that now, or do you want me to pull that?
Why don't we, what is the number of that?
It is the budget amendment, pages fifteen through eighteen.
Okay.
It's the first time I remember seeing something like this, so I just wanted to make sure I understand it.
Then why don't we, why don't we pull that?
We have an amended amendment, so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Oh, okay. So we're going to pull that item anyway?
Yeah, we're going to-
Mind me a good thing to do.
We're gonna, we're gonna do this and reverse order the, we're gonna say F, which is the one you've originally asked to be pulled, we'll call that item under new business H.
Okay.
And we'll pull Budget Amendment E, and we'll call that I. Just because I've already written the other one in. Are there any other wishes of the Commission to change the agenda as you see it before you? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, please say so by indicating, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The amended agenda is approved unanimously. Now, the rest of the consent agenda, do I hear a motion that it be approved as it remains?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as it is constituted at this time, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to public comments, and we have two speakers tonight. Let me remind you that you're entitled to three minutes, and if you would state your name when you come up, and we are very pleased to have our speakers, so at this time, our first speaker would be Mr. Noel. Mr. Noel?
Thank you. Before you put the stopwatch on me, what started out to be a one-part presentation is now three parts. Could I get a one or two-minute warning?
Yes, Mr. Hoyle will give you that.
A recent article published in the Sanford Herald related to campaign ethics, I requested a copy of the Code of Ethics for county officials. Based upon my review, and I'm shortening this, I find it to be lacking at least two areas. The words "gad" and "should," "reference gad," leave open the fact that something is not mandatory. The words "must," "will," "required," "mandatory" close that option slash interpretation by officials of the true meaning and intent of the code. Secondly, there's no penalty clause, and I've recommended one of those, and each of you have my comments. Now, item two. Just this morning, I received a second Code of Ethics after I was told by two people associated with this board that the only code of ethics that existed was the one I had. I have not had time to read this one. I need time to read this one, and I would like to address it in the future, probably not at this board, but through a letter to the board. Now, I have some comments for the board, as well as the audience that's here. I am disappointed in the many, many times that I've spoken to this board and not received any feedback. I have requested feedback on this Code of Ethics. I would appreciate some. I'm exhausted. I feel like I'm talking to a sponge that sits there and absorbs what I say. Well, I'm gently gonna squeeze that sponge so something comes back to me. I thank you for listening, and I solicit your comments on my suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Noel, and we do hear you, and we thank you. We hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Mr. Keith Clark. Good evening.
Good evening, Keith Clark, Mr. Chairman. I have called the graphics folks that P. Lee dispatch, they're looking for an appropriate lightning strike, because I agree completely with Mr. Reeves on the issue regards to the matters of the EDC, and I think he made an excellent point. And we sat here for a lot, hour and a half, two and a half hours, and decided absolutely positively nothing. I do want to report to you that as of today, there are 4,074 unemployed people on unemployment insurance in Lee County. Discounting the medical requirements, training, there are 12 jobs, a couple of those would be working for the county, and a couple would be working for the community college. Now that is, I'm here every time to talk about this, got a section with blog voted to this, that things are coming, the jobs are not coming back, the big industries are not coming likely to come here. There is absolutely nothing in the packet that I saw put together by the Economic Development Commission. The Gane L couldn't handle them. She's very thorough. She checked the facts. She get all the forms filled out. She make sure they get filed, and the work will get done. So I am in complete agreement that we have got to have a new strategy. We got off-base when we took jobs out of the formula, claiming we could not track them. After that, everything becomes attractive because it improves your base. Do you understand what I'm saying? You take the job, the number of jobs, out of your requirement, everything's attractive because it's going to improve your base. And we need therefore to have a different strategy for a different economy, and we need to be investing our money in different ways, and it needs to be looked at seriously. And I agree with what I think I've heard many of you, so I think most of you say that we are not prepared for BRAC, we're not prepared to get the good part of BRAC, and we therefore need to take a hard look at our economic development strategy. But you are the leaders of the county, and you're going to have to see to that setting, that it is looked at, and that strategy there, and then, once you decide your strategy, then decide your organizational structure and how you want to go about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Before we go any further, I just wanted to, what I usually do, but sincerely welcome every one of you here tonight. Thank you for being here. This is an important meeting, and we need your, welcome your input and your involvement in this process, because it's on behalf of the citizens that we're here and voted to serve your interests. So thank you very much, and most welcome to you all. At this time, we're going to have several public hearings, and the first one is a public hearing for the proposed fire district tax rates for the year 2009 to 10. And Mr. Crumpton, our county manager, is going to say a few words about that, and then I will declare the public hearing open for positive comments and for any negatives. So, Mr. Crumpton, would you please?
Yes, very much, Chairman. I'm just going to read the proposed tax rates for the 2009 year. Carolina Trace, 6.7 cents; Deep River, 10.4; Northview, 8 cents; Cape Fear, 8.3; Lemon Springs, 8.9; Tramway, 7.9; Northwest Pocket, 12.5; and West Sanford, 15. These were the rates that were advertised as part of the public hearing and are now open for discussion.
Okay, I'd like to declare this meeting in public session now, and we have some people who have signed up to speak on behalf of this issue. And again, we would ask speakers to limit their speaking to three minutes, please, and I would ask for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the fire district rates. And I have the names here, but it's not indicated to me whether or not it's pro or con. I'd like to ask, I have Mr. Clark, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Sloan, Mrs., is that? Ligon? Ligon, yes, okay. And then Mr. Hall. So what we do is ask anyone who, out of that group, who has wished to speak to us, who is in favor, who speaks in favor of the fire tax hike, to please come forward and, starting with, sir? Mr. Sloan?
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Mr. Hayes and County Commissioners, Mr. Crumpton, I'm basically neither for or against. I know that the budget that the Cape Fear Fire Department put together did not change from last year. It is in the department's best interest for the budget to remain the same. I realize due to collections that our tax rate has increased some from last year, so from that standpoint, I'm hoping that the board will approve the budgets as presented by the Fire Advisory Board, which was elected by the county commissioners and a group of individuals that put, give them the task to look at the budgets and make recommendations, and I feel that they have done so. I don't always agree with what they do, but they're doing the best, and I think it's given each fire department the opportunity to participate in that and have representation, and the process has been working for several years now, and I would like to see the commissioner support what the Fire Advisory Board has put forth. I know that because of the substations that are being built in certain areas, that budgets do change, tax rates will change probably, and we feel that because even if ours goes up, that the citizens that will benefit from the substation and the insurance rating will far exceed the savings of what a tax increase of a half a cent or a penny might do. They're going to save more than that by being put in a rated district, which is one of the primary goals that the Fire Advisory Board had, and I feel like if things stay the same or not taken into consideration in regard to that, it would disservice to the citizens and to the process that was put in place. And so I, as a member of the Cape Fear Fire Department and a citizen of that district, I would hope that you would support the budget that the Fire Advisory Board has recommended and that we have put forth before the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, is there anyone else in favor? Mrs. Ligon?
Yes.
Hi, welcome.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm a citizen of Lee County and have been for my adult life, and I understand how difficult budgets are. I just recently lost my position because of a budget cut in Lee County schools, so I know what it's like. However, there comes a time when we have to decide what is most important, and the quality of life for the citizens of North Carolina, meaning protecting the property and lives, has to be considered foremost. The western part of the county is just growing leaps and bounds, and I think that fire protection is one of the services that's got to continue. So I'm here on behalf of West Sanford Fire Department. I'm hoping that you will consider their budget and give them whatever they need to continue the fine service that they have been giving us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, there are three, sir? You're speaking on behalf of, in favor, okay?
Yes, I'm Rodney Campbell.
Okay.
I'm Chief of Northview, and I'm also Secretary of the Chief Association. Royce Gaines is with me, he's president of Lee County Firefighter Association. We're the two that drafted this information that was passed out to you. What we're trying to show, this was interpreted by some as an attack, it was no attack. We're trying to give you the facts and figures, that we are the only group in this county that are putting money back in the taxpayer pocket by giving them a service. If you looked at what we're doing, the example on the back, I'm Northview, so I used us as an example, a Class 10 was $1,343. This is based, this is information we got from an insurance company, and it gives different rates for different classes. Class five, which Northview's a 5.9, which means that anybody within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant gets a Class 5 rate. If you're over 1,000 feet, you get a Class 9 rate. So the people inside of our, according to these insurance rates, the people within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant, their insurance premium's $570, and insurance savings of $773. On that same $150,000 home, they're paying Northview $102 in fire tax. So they're saving $671 by being in the Northview Fire District. And it's like this for every district. I mean, every district that's listed here is putting money back in the taxpayer pocket. And I guess one thing that we wanted to get across was, a lot of you, or most of you, were not on the Commissioner, Tyler Wilson voting on. If we went door-to-door, asked people in our communities to come out and support this fire tax, we need to vote and operate off of it. Fire trucks went from $15,000 to $100,000 back then. Chickens, tuna, barbecue supper, you wouldn't pay for fire trucks. So we went door-to-door, asking people if they supported this fire tax. They in turn asked the commissioners to put this on the ballot, give them opportunity to vote for it. They voted for it, they passed it. We understand that you're all responsible for setting the tax rates and looking over our money. You've also appointed the Fire Advisory Board to do that work for you, which I don't blame you a bit, but I really wish you would take the Fire Advisory Board recommendations to heart and, yeah, let them do what they're supposed to do. They have met hours with the fire departments. I've been at a meet with them for hours, and tried to explain our budgets, why we need to do what we do, to make them understand where we're at. So they're doing the legwork for you, so please accept their recommendations. Do you have any questions about this, Charlie?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, are you speaking in opposition?
I guess.
Sir?
I guess.
And, and Mr. Hall?
Opposition.
Opposition. Okay, and I wanted to take this opportunity, it's come to my attention that there may be someone outside who-
I snuck in when someone-
You snuck in, okay.
But I have not registered.
We'll register you right now. Your name is?
Evelyn Spivey.
Okay.
There's one more out there that I'd like to speak off of.
Okay. Would you, could we invite her in?
It's him.
Him. Good evening. You're wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes.
And your name?
Nancy Hall.
Okay. Nancy Hall.
Uh-huh.
And the gentleman, were you?
Bill Willett.
Bill Willett, and you wish to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, I would remind everyone that we would ask you to try to keep your comments limited to three minutes, and we are very, very pleased to have you here. And, Mr. Clark, you were at the top of the list. If you'd come forward at this time, and Mr. Hoyle will give everyone the, shan't say the finger, he'll tell people when their time is up.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's no group I respect more than our firefighters, primarily because they're community-based. I think we made a mistake as a society when we closed all our community schools and built these great big schools that nobody owns anymore, that nobody wants to take care of. And I don't want to see that happen to our fire departments, through our volunteer fire departments. I respect those people. But I have heard the discussions here, I have read the materials, and I simply believe that we've got now one department pushing the top, that the issue of a blended rate needs to be on the table. Not now, that's why I said I wasn't shook, but this rate is not a blended rate, so I put myself down on the opposed side. But as we do that, we have got to do that in such a way that still preserves the community character of our departments. But we cannot leave to the chance of development and things we can't control. One year, one department may need a lot more than another. We don't break out medical emergency services that way. We don't break out sheriff's office services that way. But I do want to say, in looking for that change, I want to emphasize again, we need to try to preserve the community character, because it's strong communities that build strong counties, and that's easier done around a community rather than some artificial group that's created by the government. So this is sort of that talking out of both sides of my mouth. I want to preserve the community character, but I'm afraid, just looking down the road, you're going to have problems you can't resolve for those communities if we don't take a hard look at a legislative rate.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Hall, Ed Hall?
Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, a chance to speak to you. I'm from the Lemon Springs District. I have been for 80 years, except military career. About 20 years ago, Lemon Springs came into existence from the Tramway Fire Department. Built a nice building in front of Greenwood School, first-class building, metal building. I built one about that time itself. Paved the driveways, three bays, and approximately two years ago, they added a fourth bay, metal building. And shortly after that, they brick veneered a metal building, a perfect building. And I only, I asked one or two questions. I said, "Why do you brick veneer a metal building?" "So it would look birdier." There's more metal buildings in the county than there is brick buildings out in Lemon Springs, you know, far south and anything. So my question is, if they have money to do stuff like this, all this fine equipment sitting in there, now that, I respect the firefighters. Nothing against the firefighters at all, they're heroes, all of them are, Sheriff's Department and all that, but we can't support our schools. They have to cut back, the Sheriff's Department has to cut back, everybody has to cut back, because I went through the Great Depression. At that point, a recession. We have a recession right now, they say. But, you, everybody's going to have to hold their own, and I say the fire department's going to have to hold their own too, because they haven't got any more now than they had last year or the year before that. We've got a brick building now with a, it looks like somebody was kind of short on the roof, because designed as a metal building, and they put brick around, but they don't give the overhang, you know, for metal buildings, they do for brick veneering. And that's about all I've got to say, but I'm absolutely against any tax increase whatsoever because I have some elderly people, and I cannot, I've hurt my conscience, since I've thought about raising their water rate and garbage rate or rent rate, because they cannot afford it. It's their medicine and food, or if I raise their rates, it's one or the other, it's out. Same way with me. And my tax, my fire tax, last year was $381.89. I think I contributed my first share, and I want to thank Mr. Kelly and Mr. Crumpton for the other situation I asked you about. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Evelyn Spivey? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm from Cumknock, and I do oppose this because I can't afford it. Fire Department, when it was first built, my husband and I were in that activity. We were told that our insurance on our homes would be lowered. This has not happened, and the gentleman speaking a while ago about how far you are from a fire hydrant has nothing to do with Cumknock. If it does, there's a fire hydrant at the fire department and not one any closer to me. But I cannot afford any increase. I'm paying now four months to get my taxes paid, because when you retire and when you're out of work, my husband's been laid off, he's out of work, I've had to add him to my insurance, so it's just another hardship for us when you close more taxes on us. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Nancy Hall? Mrs. Hall? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Hall, and I'm from Cumknock. I am very, very proud that we have a fire department. I've even been the recipient of their services at one time as a house- I've even been the recipient of their services at one time as a house fire. I appreciate that piece. I also understand that in order for those firefighters to do their job, they need to be appropriately trained. However, when you look at the population of the area, you will find that most of us are like me. I'm a 74-year-old widow, and I live in that community and have been living in that community for a long time. I pay, right now, a sizable tax as a result of living in that area. I understand that we have some of the finest equipment in the county in that area. I agree with Evelyn when she said that our insurance rates were going to go down. When we had a fire department there, it has not. I've lived there many years, it did not. And I pay over $100 a month now for fire insurance on my house. So, and that's not talking about taxes, that's talking about fire insurance. And I have a set income because I'm on social security, I am a widow, I live day-to-day, I check every day to see if I have money in the bank to do the things I need to do. I try really hard to do that. I also have a daughter that lives there with me, and she's been unemployed now for a year. So I understand the process of what we need to do. We've got to have a good fire department. I want us to have a good fire department. I want us to have an economical fire department. I want us to look at what equipment we have and say, "Okay, is this because we have the ability to get it, or is this because this is what we need?" We have that huge, big plant down there, none of us had any say-so in whether the plant was there or not. And I understand that they are now in bankruptcy, and so they cannot pay their fair share because they don't have any money. Excuse me, the rest of us are pretty much at the same situation. And I do not want us to do away with fire departments. I do not want us to do away with training. But I want us to be very, very good at looking at our budget and say, "Okay, this is what I have to have. Not what I want, but what I have to have to get the job done." All of us have to do that now. When we look at our budgets, we say, "Gosh, I'd like to have," and then we say, "Okay, do I really need it?" And I think that's something we're just going to have to do. And every department in the state is going to have to do that, and probably every place in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willett?
Good evening.
Hello. I'm Bill Willett, and I live in West Safford District. And I know most of these boys, and I was on the fire department for several years myself, and I'm proud of it, and still proud of it. But this 4% vast and forward is entirely too much money for the way the economy is today. And right now, I pay $1,200 a year for two houses for fire insurance. Right there. And we have a brick building up there. They come up and they're wooden siding to it and put vinyl around it, and one of them told me it was purdy. But purdy don't put out fires. So his money could have been put in the budget and saved. You've got to save these rainy days. Then another one told me, being the, the metal building, they need to put brick around it to make it purdy. Well, let's hold our dollars down. But that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that completes the list of those who wish to speak for and those who wish to speak against this proposition. So I'll call these hearings to a close on the fire district at this time. Thank you all for participating and speaking up and speaking out, that's very important. Now we're going to have on our agenda another public hearing. This is, has to do with the Economic Development Project between Lee County Economic Development Corporation and Score Energy. And I'm going to call on Mr. Bob Hughes, who is the Executive Director of the Economic Development Corporation. David?
Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. This day in time, when we're discussing the budget like we are, we wonder if you shouldn't throw a hat in first before you walk in the room, see what comes flying out, and see whether or not you can continue to move into the room. I am here tonight representing the Economic Development Board and to talk to you about a project that has to do with a company called Score Energy that's located on Tramway Road. Tonight, the Commissioners will hold a public hearing. That's been advertised according to the General Statute 158-7.1. And those are the guidelines in the state that allow cities and counties to participate in economic development projects. We also have a local investment guideline here that's been adopted by the city, the county, and the town of Broadway. This project also meets the qualifications for that investment guideline that we have. So tonight's recommendation is, the unanimous recommendation from the Economic Development Board to you. So let's talk a little bit about Score Energy. It's a small company that moved here initially in 2006, they leased 12,000 square feet on Tramway Road. In 2007, they decided to buy that building. They started out with four people at that time, and they currently employ 10. They re-manufacture Rolls-Royce gas turbines that they use to generate electricity. They bring those engines in from anywhere in the country, completely overhaul and rebuild them to OEM specifications. So you've got a lot of precision machining, replacing parts, building of new parts, disassembly and assembly, all to meet those specifications. They have a great relationship with their educational system here. Currently have a couple of apprentices that have been provided, or through the Central Carolina Community College. It is a company that's privately owned from Scotland, headquarters in Aberdeen, Sheriff's Scotland. And they have a number of businesses, a number of locations all over the world, about 30 of them. They're proposing to build an 18,000-square-foot building on their lot on Tramway Road. They've got a couple of acres of land there. This would expand their ability to overhaul those engines, maybe even add a couple of other engines for them. The investment, they anticipate it will be $2.5 million, a million of it being in the building and a million and a half in the specialized equipment. When the EDC met and discussed this project, they're recommending to the county that this incentive be funded for five years, 50% of what they'll pay. When we started this project out, I have to be honest with you, we, I clearly thought this project, proposed project, was within the city limits of Sanford. It turns out that it's not, and so some of the documentation that you have actually changed all of that. So we're really just dealing with the county, EDC, and Score Energy project rather than having the city involved with that. I did have a public hearing scheduled with the city tomorrow. They're disappointed, but I'm not going to be able to be there tomorrow. We did the calculations based on the investment, included and accounted for the depreciation of the machinery, and came up with a grant, a crystal ball of $38,681 over a five-year period, that would be paid out over a five-year period. All the details on how that's paid out are included in that grant agreement that you have in front of you. Here also to answer any questions that you might have regarding the project.
Mr. Chairman, you do have an amended agreement. Last week, you did bring to my attention some typos and brought that to Bob's attention. So in your extra paperwork that was sent to you, there's a revised agreement.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Hughes or Mr. Crumpton, at this time regarding this company and the proposition that's before us? Hearing none, we will declare this now to go into public forum, public session, and we will invite speakers to, who have signed up to speak in pro or against this proposition. Mr. Hughes, did you have something?
Well, I was going to start it out, if you were going to go with pros, I would go ahead and make a comment that I'd be in favor of this, funding this project.
Do you wish to be more elaborate?
Well, I think, you know, we heard it earlier today, there are a number of people that are unemployed, a number of 4,000 was thrown out, and those are just the people receiving unemployment insurance. Anytime we have an opportunity to have a company expand here, opens up opportunities for new jobs to be created, maybe we'll start lowering the number of people that are actually out there receiving those benefits. I truly believe there are probably more than 4,000 people that are not working. In some cases, like the benefits have run out, and they're no longer eligible for those. So, you know, to have a small company come in here, they put their roots down here in Sanford, they've had a good experience here. We want them to continue to have a good experience. They, I think, are doing wonderful things, training folks there. I think this is just a really nice opportunity, so I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With the $2.5 million addition, do you know what type of building that's going to be? You know, is it a modular or metal-type or brick-and-mortar?
I really haven't, I have not really talked to them about it.
I was just trying to think of jobs generated just by the construction.
Oh, yeah, I think the building, if you look at it today on Tramway Road, is a combination, brick face, pre-engineered metal building. That's pretty typical construction in most cases. There will be jobs, obviously, for the construction industry, and hopefully all that will be kept here. So, good point. Thank you.
Okay, we're still in a public hearing. Thank you very much. Mr. Hughes, I have Mr. Clark listed to speak. I'm sorry? Oh, sorry.
I was, I did not sign up, but I'd like to speak if I may.
You may come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Say your name again?
Yes, my name is John Daniel. I serve as, excuse me, I serve on your Executive Committee for the Economic Development Corporation. I thank you for the performance to be able to speak to. My comments tonight go a little bit farther than Mr. Hughes' presentation about Score Energy. The presentation was, and I wholeheartedly support that, and I will assure you that it did go through a rigorous review by the board to see the merits of that. But what I'd like to present to you or to speak to you about tonight is, I had several folks, good friends, people in the business community, still come and ask me about incentives. I've been involved with the Economic Development Corporation for several years, as most of you know, and a lot of folks do not understand. What I'd like to be able to, I firmly believe that citizens and even some of our elected officials do not understand what these incentives are. I think perhaps large numbers get bandied about, they're talked about, things that may be given away, or cost. We hear every day in the paper about unemployment. Sure, it's affected our whole country. It has nothing to do with what I'm trying to tell us now. What I'm trying to make sure that everyone understands is that cost is like an accounting process. What I like to think of these things are as an investment. Because I truly believe that they continue to give back to our community. This is not a local rule or law, if you will. We refer to general statutes that give us the ability to do these incentives. But if we don't do them, then we lose them not only perhaps to another county or city, we could lose them to another state. And believe me, they can go and will go other places if we don't. I'm not saying our incentive program is perfect. I don't know that anybody says. And I'll stand before you and tell you that I'm willing to work on that if we can. But now's not the time to give the wrong message to good industry, that hopefully we'll bring good jobs to the State Department of Commerce, who will say, "Well, they don't want us down there." Then they might send us the wrong kind of people here. I truly believe that we will bring good folks if we continue to give incentives. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, we want to keep this focused, of course, on school, which, that's what, thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Clark who had signed up to speak in opposition. Mr. Clark, you'll come forward?
Mr. Chairman, it does trouble me to speak against this in as much as this is headquartered in my ancestral home, my ancestors. When I'm not here to, when Score came here in 2006, they expected the Sanford facility to employ about 40 people when it was fully developed in the next five or six years. And you have already somewhat heard my objection in general, is that there is, or can't look at any of this paperwork and see how many jobs are going to benefit from this. Either, maybe you have paperwork I don't, didn't get in the packet, but I got, either within the company, or what someone has estimated the job impact of this might be in terms of someone was asking about the building. How's it going to be built? What kind of materials is going to be involved and so forth? There just isn't a look at the number of jobs. And as some of you know, I feel strongly, the concept of a company and a job is a dying concept. And I believe it is tough medicine to stand here, and no one, I challenge anyone to find anybody more concerned, or probably who said more to most of you about unemployment in this county than me. But it's tough to, we have to make these decisions. But sooner or later, we have to wean ourselves away, and we have to step back and we have to look and say, "Is this the best way to go about what we're doing?" And in order to do that, somebody has just got to be able to stand up and say, "We've got to wean ourselves away and look at the future." So I'm doing that tough thing tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I apologize, I did not sign up to speak, but may I say a few words?
Come forward. You're speaking in opposition?
Yes, I am.
And your name, please?
My name is Sheila Barber. First of all, I want to say it's really a pleasure to be in front of you speaking. One thing that bothers me about these incentives is, are there guarantees that what happened to Wyeth, you suddenly lay off employees, that you guys can come back and say, "Hey, it's over. Contract's done. We're not going to give you any more money." Can I, as a citizen, get that guarantee out of my elected leaders? Can you do it legally? First of all, you can tell me yes or no, can you do that? I really am waiting for an answer here. Can you do it? Can you guarantee me, as a citizen? You're going to take my tax dollars and you're going to give it away because honestly, it's because I work that you work. That's the first thing that you need to understand. And if you cannot guarantee me, the rest of the people in this room, the people who are going to watch you on TV, and the people that you go every day and see, that you cannot renegon that contract because they have, then you don't deserve to take my money and spend it. And it is my money. I work very hard for it. My family is also suffering with the economic times. Wyeth is suffering, but you're giving them over $700,000, I mean, that I am aware of because I just really got into looking at your budgets and stuff. So before you make a decision like that to give another company company, I fully understand the gentleman's argument. If we don't give them money and look attractive, more counties are going to get them. South Carolina's going to get them, Tennessee, it doesn't matter. Somebody's going to offer the dough because it's so easy to take our money that we work hard for and give it away without thinking about what's down the line. If you want my support, and you know I'm going to tell you how I feel... If you want my support, and you know I'm gonna tell you how I feel, from the paper and everywhere else I can, is that I wanna guarantee that you're gonna put it in a contract, if you have a down economic time, that you will not waste my dollars anymore. You just had some fire marshals up here, or representatives, saying they need equipment. Yeah, they sure do. That's what you guys need to be working on. But giving our money away to attract businesses, first of all, you know what that tells me? Your taxes are too high to begin with. If your taxes are low enough, they're gonna come. If your county is a really, is a centrally located county, we're in the perfect spot to get brack, to get all these other industries to come in. But we got hurting people in our county, and you're wasting my tax dollars. So, please, I want, I really, really wanna know, I want someone to honestly tell me, if you can put this in a contract, that if you bring this company in, and you promise them, I don't know how much money, that if things happen and continue the way they are, that we need contingent things to go on. We don't need to just throw away our taxpayer dollars. Please, please, let me know, because it's my money, not yours. And I wanna make sure my money goes to the best places. Believe me, in my budget, I don't waste it, it goes. Yes, sir? Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will declare the public hearing closed, and thank all of our speakers we hear. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to us unilaterally, so that's what we do. So, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move into our new business, new business agenda. And I'd like to call on Mr. Crumpton, who is going to speak to us about our need to approve the capital improvement project called CIP for the year 2009 to '10. Mr. Crumpton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, I presented the capital improvement program such as it is. And after having two weeks to review it, we're asking for approval of the resolution adopting the capital improvement program. The total CIP requested was a little over $103 million. And approved for the next five years, $51,000. So, we took quite a bit out, and as we talked about last month, there's not a whole lot in the next two years for capital improvements due to budget constraints, so ask for your approval. Okay? If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do, John. I think I asked you about this when you showed us the proposal. Under the education for CCC, the continuing education, is that in addition to the pods we just were putting over at Wicker?
Yes, ma'am. That, they, as we discussed last month, you know, that could get pushed back, if we wanted to push it back. But since it's not in the next two years, the starting of the funding, you know, we just left it as is. But, you know, the pods going over at Wicker probably buy them four to five years before we really have to go and build something at the community college. And, of course, that is determined by their growth, which right now is pretty phenomenal due to the unemployment rate and number of people trying to get new training.
So this is actually the construction of?
Of a building. Their plans would be to go in behind the civic center. And actually, they have plans for two, they would like to build two buildings, but obviously, we, you know, can only work on one right now.
Again, we're looking at a plan that looks out five years in the future, and the coming year is minimal. I think the project there, Mr. Crumpton, is the San Lee Dam, which you?
Yes, sir. We met with the engineers last week. The plans are before the state at this time, and we hope to hear something within 60 days on the plan, and hopefully to have something out to bid sometime in July and early August.
And that's it?
And we're moving forward, one way or another, we'll have to move forward.
Okay?
Only because we have to.
Because we have to.
Do I hear a motion? It's been moved that the capital improvement program for 2009 and '10, as presented to us, be approved. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the proposal as presented to us, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is no opposition, so that is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the Fire District Budget Ordinance for 2009, '10. Again, Mr. Crumpton, you have the honor of stepping off on that one.
I don't really know what to say now. I mean, I've already introduced the rates, the proposed rates. Page 29 through 43 is the actual ordinance, lays out the rates, plus the amount of revenue that we give to each department, plus sets out the fire marshal's budget. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board on the ordinance.
Are there any questions of Mr. Crumpton? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do approve these budgets as presented by the Fire Advisory Board. I do sit on that Fire Advisory Board. And I know it's the feeling of some of my colleagues here, that you want to hold the rates the same. And I can understand that. But when you take a look at the discrepancy in the taxable base and the collection rates for these various fire districts, you know, not everybody is created equally. And when you get a district that's had a really big hit, either because of adexation by City of Sanford, or with Pilgrim's Pride going bankrupt, it does take a big hit. And I've learned a lot by sitting on that Fire Advisory Board, and one of them is things that affect the fire ratings, their inspections. And there's lots of people here that can answer this better than me tonight, but being able to have so many people on a call. And so, there's just a lot of things that we, as commissioners, are not aware of that affects their inspections and their ratings. Those ratings do affect their insurance rates. And I fully understand, it looks like most of the people work on the West Sanford area. I think there was one from Lemon Springs area. And I would make the motion to approve the Fire Advisory Board recommendation as presented with the stipulation that the Fire Advisory Board and the West Sanford Department develop a long-term financial plan to present to the Board of Commissioners no later than our first meeting in January of 2010. And that long-range plan must include how they're going to continue to operate without the Chatham County contribution, which is 25 percent. Because Chatham County is also looking at a substation, which they would no longer use West Sanford for. And so, if a viable plan cannot be, you know, determined in the next six months, then I think one of our options, as the Board of Commissioners, would maybe be to dissolve that. But I wanna take it out of our hands and let the Fire Advisory Board and West Sanford, you know, work out a plan. Does everyone understand my motion?
Mr. Chairman.
To approve, but with that stipulation, with West Sanford, six months, they have a contingency plan for us.
The motion's been made. Yes, sir?
I'm from West Sanford, and that's my district, and they've had a lot of hardship with what they've, you know, it's already a small district, it's already, you know, been hit hard by Pilgrim's Pride. Do you have the letter, I mean, from Chatham County?
Mr. Hayes has the letter.
And you might want, do we have that?
I would, I wouldn't have a clue as to where it is right now. But if there's a second copy of it, it would be nice to have.
Well, to paraphrase, basically, is their county commissioners are, the rate for West Sanford sits on the Chatham County's rate. And they, obviously, got them in a tizzy about their rate went up four cents, and when they had already told everybody that they were not, that they're gonna be revenue neutral. And, you know, it's tough that everything just sort of snowballs and piles on right now, but you've got the letter. You wanna read that?
Sure. Okay. Would you like me to, I'll read this. All right. This is Mr. Crumpton from Charles Horn, Charlie Horn County Manager in Chatham County, regarding the West Sanford Fire District tax rate. Dear John, we have learned that West Sanford Fire District, which serves the Asbury area of Chatham County, has requested a tax rate for fiscal year '09, '10 of 15.4 cents. We encourage your Board of Commissioners to set the rate as the same as last year, if not less. This is a reevaluation year for Chatham County, and we specifically requested that each district set a neutral, a revenue neutral or less rate. All of them did so. I think it is also worth noting that Circle City District Pittsburgh is currently looking for land to build a station to better serve the Asbury area. Everyone is struggling to fit service demands into budget realities. This year, we believe, is a particularly bad year to raise the tax rate unless it is impossible to circumvent. We fully recognize the economic situation everyone finds themselves in. We don't think it is a good time to place additional burdens on citizens if we can be, if we can avoid it. Thanks for your time and attention to this request. Charlie Horn County Manager, Chatham County.
At the time we interviewed them, I found my notes here. I was under the impression that Chatham County had capped them at 10 cents, and that's what he had told us, and that's what I had written down here. In fact, part of the reason for the confusion with West Sanford is, Don Lanews, are you in here?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're hiding in the back row there, but this budget that West Sanford presented us did not have Chatham County's budget in it. But I know there was some confusion, because they included their reimbursement, and we subtracted that, thinking?
The '08, '09 budget process did show the reimbursement from Chatham County, but the park was only the Lee County expenses, so yes, it got deducted out. So instead of getting $107,000, they were, or slated to get $84,000 in the current year.
And we kind of had that same misunderstanding the previous year, because we added?
Last year.
Yeah. We deducted it out, and nobody?
It came to light this year in this budget process when we met with Chief Richardson.
And, you know, I wanna say in regard to some of these, these other folks, you know, when they submit us these budgets, they're, they're pretty much line item. And I can't see a whole lot of fluff in here anywhere. And a lot of this stuff is required by the State Department of, is it Insurance? So, you know, again, I'm gonna recommend this with the West Sanford stipulation.
Did you do analysis of every fund balance that each department had?
Let me explain about fund balance, because a lot of?
Same thing we're going through with our fund balance.
Okay, but, and some of these guys can explain a lot better, but from my novice knowledge, when they get some of these grants, and several of them got big grants, some of that they have to pay 50 percent of. So, you know, they need those capital funds there to pay that. They also do a little bit better job of capitalizing for their future needs by building money in their capital fund to replace equipment, and to replace trucks, and whatever, so.
I just have a hard time raising taxes on people out, that has, you know, you've heard them come up here, and they're on fixed incomes, and, you know, it's just, I don't?
And you know, I'm probably the most anti-tax?
Can't believe we're having this conversation.
I know it, I know it. But when you take a look at the options, you know, if they, and I've told you the story before, how the substation Lemon Springs, I have somebody there who has his house on one side, shop on the other side, $400 difference in his insurance, in his homeowner's insurance. So that's why the folks in Comnac, who said they were spending $100 a month on fire insurance, that seems awfully high to me. Is that's not high?
No, that's not what they're paying.
It's not what they're paying?
Or they got a mansion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr., oh, I'm familiar with the Fire Board, I'm on the Fire Board, and I appreciate all the work they've done, and I appreciate the fire. But at this time, every agency in the county is taking a cut in their budget. And I'd like to motion to amend the tax rate for the volunteer fire departments to remain the same as fiscal year 2008 and 2009. And again, just like you said, London, I'd like to ask the Fire Advisory Board to come back to this board by January 1, 2010, and some kind of plan for the West Sanford Fire Department.
Doc, how do you, and I understand that, how do you adjust, though, for somebody who's had a, either a big taxable base drop or a big collection rate drop? You know, because there's some departments who have a lot of flexibility in being able to do that, others don't, so.
As you probably know, when I was on the Fire Board, I was for flat tax.
I am too. I'm the Fire Advisor Board?
And I think if we had that, it wouldn't be such a talk about this now. So, you know, I'm for good fire protection, and I think fire departments got to do like everybody else is doing, like alive. We got to pull in, tighten our belts, and get through another year, and then next year, maybe we can give them all an increase.
Let me just say this, so we have a motion on the floor, we have an amendment to that motion, which is a proper amendment, and I think that we will open the floor for discussion now on the amendment. Let's, let's keep this proper. And then, when we finish this, we're gonna call for a vote, so. Yes?
Can I call on Mr. Sloan to answer a couple of the questions from the fire departments?
Sure, absolutely. I think if you feel that's important.
We've talked about, Mr. Kelly's raised questions about the fund balance. And Mr. Odom's raised questions about keeping it the same. But my understanding is, you know, even if a fire department has kept their budget the same because of the reduction in tax collections, that's gonna hurt them, you know? I mean, am I on the right track?
With the reduction in collections, as well as us taking on the recommendations being from Kate Fear and our department, I feel like we've already reduced our budget from the standpoint, we're building a new substation that costs $368,000, and we have not increased our budget. So from my standpoint, with our 10-year outlay plan, we've done that, and if it was not for our reduced collections, we would not be increasing our tax rate at all. I'm against taxes as much as anybody. I mean, I'll be the first to tell you that. But to operate, to meet the Department of Insurance standards, and Doc, Mr. Odom was on the Fire Advisory Board that approved these substations, understanding the reduction in insurance premium that citizens should seek. Economic times, we can't dictate that. We can deal with them and do the best we can. But as far as our budget, I feel like we've already reduced our budget because of additional expense that we're gonna have to incur without changing our budget. And that may not be the case, and I understand he's for the flat tax, and I've got my opinion about that. But people choose to live where they choose to live in most cases. And if a business comes into Lee County like you've been talking about, they're gonna evaluate this county based off of these tax rates. It's the same with citizens moving into this county and where they live. And when you eliminate those options by going to a flat tax rate, it's not gonna go down once you set it. We've all seen that already.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna ask you a question, Mr. Sloan. You mentioned the substations. The Fire Advisory Board would approve those?
Yes, sir.
Willing to those?
Yes, sir.
When did that take place?
Probably two years ago. Two years ago?
Okay, back to the business at hand. We have an amendment to the motion that amends and says that we will keep the tax and the fee the same. In other words, this coming year will be just the same as this past year, the year we're in. It will not change. Is that essentially?
I mean, the rate.
The rate will not change, and that the West Sanford District will work with the Fire District Board to come up with a plan for getting it out of the situation it's in, a transition of sorts, if you will. We don't wanna? We, we don't want to predict what that would be, but that there needs, there has to be some kind of change, I believe is the spirit of this, uh, because of the circumstances that are no one's fault but have sort of befallen the West Sanford Fire District. So that is the amended motion that's on the floor. And if there's any further comment on that, I'd like to ask for it now, otherwise we'll take a vote.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, does West Sanford predicament involve, obviously involves additional cash flow? Or what is it?
Just increasing that district's water tax.
Tax to 15 cents.
Isn't a quarter their budget coming from Chatham County?
But that's not included in their...
That's not included, no.
It's not in there.
It's not in here.
Their tax base has been reduced. Their main tax basis, uh, asset has, has left or closed up. And, uh, that's the reason the, it's gone to the max, their new tax rate, and, and I believe...
Have some financial impact on their ability to function.
Yes, sir.
And so, is there, yes, is there a cure for that between now and January as well? I'm interested in that.
Uh, I, the, the sense I hear of this is that it probably is not realistically and that some form of transition needs to take place so that, um, that Fire District will be, well, taken care of and absorbed or transitioned in some way. I don't know how that will configure, but is that the, could you elaborate on that? Is that, is that the sense I...
I think that's something the fire board would have to come to us.
Is West Sanford in here?
Yeah, we're here.
Could I hear from you?
What do you want to know, sir?
Well, tell me what you think about what you're hearing already.
Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as far as the letter from Mr. Horn, I had no idea about that. That's blindside to me and my president of the board, Bobby Branch, right here. I'm, I'm sorry. My name's Greg Stone. I'm Assistant Chief out there. Chief Richardson cannot be here tonight. Um, for, the, what our situation is in, I think it was '89, we got any, over 75% of our district got annexed to the city of Sanford. And for most of these departments, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the other districts in here, but your bigger departments, they got bigger tax bases. And for us to operate on what we do is a miracle. I mean, I've, I've been out there 13 years now. I don't do it for, for fun. I mean, I do it to be on there with guys. I didn't, I mean, don't do it for a living, but we, we scrounge by by scratching our feet. We're trying to lower our rate, but that's hard. Like, uh, Ms. Shook said, you know, talking about our insurance rating, you got to have the state of North Carolina to keep your rating. You had to have four guys on a truck, any car. If you don't have four guys on a truck, they can come in and pull your rate. In this day and age, that is hard because a volunteer is a dying breed. And I, I'm proud of the guys I got on my department. We do what we can to do. And I'm a taxpayer in West Sanford Fire Department, too. Don't get me wrong. I mean, West Sanford Fire District, don't get me wrong, times have taught. And I lost my house to fire. And if the fire department was not there, I don't know what we'd do. Because the nearest fire department is probably, Northwest Pocket is probably 12 miles from my house. And Norfus probably eight. I know y'all got a job to do, and I know we're trying to work together, but my opinion, I'm for flat tax. That's my opinion. And for one other thing, our tax rate would not be 15 cents in this county if the fire marshals didn't come out. It'd be about a cent and a half.
Hold on, hold on.
Well, now you want to know what I'm saying. I'm sorry.
But what you, what you presented would have been up to the 15 cents with or without the fire marshal's budget, in your budget.
I'll let, I'll let Bobby talk, uh, Bobby talk about that because he, he was on the board and they handled that part.
Well, let me just ask you to be respectful and let's not point fingers. I mean, uh...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no.
You're not gonna find your truth straight, bud.
Well, it is, but we gotta kind of package it with, you know, kind of gentle it a little bit. As much as you can. Okay. Please proceed.
You know, we're at what, 13.75 if we come to our department, right?
Pardon?
Our budget is like 13.75, then 1.25 go to the fire department, go to the fire marshal.
That is close, yes, sir.
Okay, so I see that. When our citizens were here earlier, they got misled anyway. Because they think we're getting 15%. We're not getting 15%. That $17,000 or so, that could help us operate a little bit longer. That goes to the fire marshal. And the fire marshal doesn't, I'm not just talking about the fire marshal. He's got a job like everybody else. But I think, uh, should not come out the fire, the fire department's budget. The county, you know, got that job, the county should fund that job. It shouldn't penalize us.
I mean, we're on a budget that, I mean, we've cut thin so far.
Uh, I don't know whether there's no more cutting we can do. As far as budget-wise, our citizens in our district, you know, they can't get what, uh, pilgrim pride, gold kids, just because bug pilgrim, one of the biggest pilgrim producer, poultry producer in the world. They can't, our citizens can't get what he done, you know? And now we're gonna penalize our citizens, you know, by not having fire protection if we don't, you know, if we don't get an increase? Just because, you know, we pilgrim pride filed bankruptcy. Years ago, we got 75% of our district granted extra. I mean, we've hit it, you know, we took the hit all the way around. So...
Well, I think that's, I think that's inherently what the problem is with their, with their district is, you know, their, their district, their tax base is half of Northwest Pocket. And then Northwest Pocket is half of the next highest. So, I mean, they're operating off an $88 million tax base. So that is, that is the problem, is they don't have any base to operate off of. So, you know, how do you correct that problem? You know, you either have to redraw district lines, you have to merge them with another district, you have to do other things besides that, because they're right. The number one, or a flat tax. The number one thing is we're responsible, this board is responsible for making sure that these services are provided to the citizens that pay the tax.
Well, that's, I mean, that's like our department. I think we got six, seven medical responders, too. I mean, you know, we just, I mean, it just ain't the fire department. I mean, and you, we're what, probably eight minutes on a, on a BMS call? Somewhere along in there. And I mean, we got our, you know, medical responders, too. And so, I mean, you're not just hurting the fire department. I mean, you're hurting, you know...
Well, let me just say this. Thank you both for speaking up. And I think that no one's gonna let the district down. This commission, we understand what you're saying. You know, we're all between kind of a rock and a hard place this year. But I don't think anyone should think that we're, we would do anything that would be less than, uh, responsible. Right. And, and with your involvement and with your consultation, you know, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be any knee-jerk type thing here. But we do see the writing on the wall, and I think, I think we all do, and we have to find a solution to it.
John, what would, um...
This board's gonna be...
Order. Come on, let's, let's, uh...
What would their income be if they, we kept their rate the same as last year?
Speak to us.
But what does Chad say? Are they pulling out or what?
I think the, uh, pitch for a build to that substation is my interpretation of the letter. Then they're gone. Is that what...
That, that letter...
I, I know y'all haven't seen that.
But I don't know, I don't know about that letter, but I have heard the rumors. But we're there to plan on putting that substation. All it would cover is three M plant on 87. It's still not gonna help their citizens in Asbury.
But Walter Bright has talked about that for years.
I mean, it's, it's 10 miles from Pittsburgh City Limit, to Rocker River Bridge on all its seven.
Well, well, this is the kind of thing, though, that the, the fire board needs to look at and is gonna have to wrestle with and make recommendations to us, you know, how this, these changes take place. But, uh, we're gonna have to move along. Are there any other questions of these two gentlemen?
We cut $27,000 out of the appropriation that we have in the ordinance.
Staying, staying at your current rate, what kind of impact will that have on your...
It would, right? Well, our, our current rate, you know, put figure of dispute will be $2.5 percent to go. You know, insurance go to the Bayview. We had to have a, you know, umbrella insurance policy now, you know, to cover not just the fire department, but our fire department, you know, for their liability, too. And, you know, $27,000 cut, I mean, you take you, I mean, you take $27,000 away, I mean, what's it gonna do?
If I made $27,000, I'd be happy with that.
Well, I mean, a lot of people are in that same shit.
Right, so I understand where you're coming from. What I'm trying to do is vote my conscience with the people who need your...
It would be, $27,000 would be, it'd be tough, and when it, it would cost you, you know...
And that's what I'm saying to this board. I don't know that you can hold out six months. So we still, we still have to have coverage for those people who live in your area. So it's incumbent upon this board to try and work something out. What, regardless of what the vote is here tonight, there needs to be an immediate attack on the problem. You know, I'm like, if everybody hear that, I'm prepared to vote. Otherwise, I can't, uh, sit here and just let it linger.
Okay, thank you. Well said.
I'd just like to add one thing. I know we are Class 9, but I'd just like the, the ones that did speak, I'm glad all the ones in our, our citizens in our district did speak. But if that fire department was not there and it was in a Class, uh, Class 10 rate, which has an unrated district, they would really hate to have to pay fire, uh, insurance on their residents. I've got one more thing. And this is from earlier. Uh, Mr. Willett was here. Our improvement, we done our building, uh, where our meeting building is, that improvement didn't come out of our budget. That improvement was we had a tree fall on our structure and messed the roof up, and the insurance company gave us a good little bit of money to fix that building back. And that, that insurance money went totally to that building to, we put vinyl siding on it, we'd redone the roof. I mean, everything that insurance paid is what improved that fire department. It didn't come out of our budget. So I wanted to make sure that was addressed, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll, I'll...
Thank you very much. We're happy to have you here and speaking out. Thank you. It helps us. I'm gonna call for the question, and we'll vote on this amendment at this time because we...
Can I make one point, though? When, I understand the other commissioners' concerns about raising taxes, going with the fire board's recommendation. But one thing I just wanted to point out is that if we go with Mr. Odom's amendment, we're still raising taxes on three districts that the fire advisory board's recommendation, that budget was to reduce the taxes in those three districts. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there. It, it's not that we're, um...
That's a, that's a good point. Would, would you want to consider saying that it will not increase? And if there's any increase, that that would be...
Well, I mean, I think then that just...
All right.
Just makes more of a...
Can you favor one of them?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you gotta go with the fire boards or, or come up with something for this board. But I think start hatching this apart.
This West Sanford situation is a, it's a emergency situation.
I agree.
I would, I would say that that's what that is. And, you know, I would, I would rather see the board take this, this, and, and keep the rates the same. And if, if they, the $27,000 that we're not funding, if it has to come out of fund balance, our fund balance, say that.
Well, we keep taking stuff out of fund balance, we're gonna be in trouble. I mean, you know...
What I'm saying is you...
You can't do that.
I was just gonna ask Mr. Hole. Mr. Hole, can you take money out of the general fund to supplement Fire District?
Can I, well, then, can I?
Okay, well, at the end of the day, we have to vote. So that's what we're, uh, paid to do, or voted to do. So, uh, I'm gonna call for a vote on the amendment, as has been stated several times. That is that we will, the, the rate will stay the same as it is this year. And next year it will be the same. And that we will go into sort of an emergency, uh, mode of operation to try to find with the Fire District Board a solution that will help West Sanford. Now, that's, that's the amended motion.
I think his, yeah, I think his amendment is to keep the rates the same, so we need to vote on that first.
Right, well, it's to, it's to keep it the same and West Sanford is included in that.
To find something to, to help West Sanford.
Yeah, so that's a passed. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Let's see a show of hands. All in favor of the amendment? One, two, three, four. All, sir, Mr. Reeves, were you?
I'm waiting.
Okay, against? One, two, three, okay, four, for the amended motion, three in opposition. So that amendment is approved. Now, that amends the original motion, and we need to vote on that as amended.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With West Sanford technically is looking at 15 cents, but in reality, is 13.75, is that it?
13.75.
75, yeah.
With the fire marshal, it's 15.
Right, and without it, it's 13.
All in favor of the amended motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And all opposed? The motion, amended motion is passed. Thank you very much. Okay, um, now we will consider the agreement between Lee County Economic Development Corporation and SCORE Energy for an Economic Development. We need to, to look at that, but we'll let the fire guests leave before we get into them. Okay, um, the next item of businesses, as I mentioned, is to consider this agreement with the Lee County Economic Development Corporation. And, um, I will move that we approve the resolution and agreement as presented. Is there a discussion?
Oh, wait. You heard...
I'm just gonna, putting it on, putting it out there for, for discussion and then a vote.
What page are we on, Mr.?
Uh, 44.
Are we open for discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I love the concept of SCORE. I think it's great when you can find a niche market and when you're in a product that's creating energy savings. But I pulled the press release from 2006 when they first came here, and I loved what they said. You know, "When I came to Sanford, North Carolina, the community instantly made me so welcome. They showed me around, presented all the facts about the place, and within a half an hour, it was a done deal. I made up my mind." So, they came here without any incentives. My question to you is, in 2006, did you promise them incentives for 2009?
Mr. Hoot? Phrase that question, or restate it.
I'm, I'm going from the press release that was issued in 2006 when they first came here. And to read this again, the owner, whoever it was, says, "When I came to Sanford, North Carolina, the community instantly made me so welcome. They showed me around, presented all the facts about the place, and within a half an hour, it was a done deal. I made up my mind." So they came here without incentives. My question is, were incentives promised to them in 2006 if they expanded years down the road?
No.
Okay. My concern with this is that, um, as I mentioned in our budget hearing, this board really needs to have a discussion on economic development versus economic growth. And to quote you earlier, Bob, you said you wanted SCORE to continue to have a good experience. Well, I would love to have some of our other small businesses who would love to have a, a reduction in their taxes, just be able to stay alive and keep people on. So, I, I just cannot support this. And I tell you, if, if you've been watching what's happening at the state of North Carolina, we're gonna be scrambling even more because they're proposing to raise income taxes, the sales tax rate, and some of the corporate rates. So counties are gonna be, again, left to, to try to, you know, recruit with ill-conceived, you know, tax refunds. And my opinion is, if we can't give across the board five-year, 50% tax, you know, breaks to every small business in Lee County, I don't think we should be giving them to any of them. And, um, you know, they came here, obviously, because they liked what they saw. And, you know, now then, a few years later, because there's free candy given out, they, they wanna try for some of that. And I don't blame them. If I were in their shoes, I probably would try it, too.
Any other, uh, comments or questions?
We had, uh, what was the lady? Is she, uh?
It's Barbara.
Is she still here?
Yes, right here.
You raised a question and quite frankly, during a public, uh, speaking or public hearing, we don't typically respond. You asked one regarding our ability to, uh, deal with companies that reneg, is that correct?
Right. What I wanna know and what I want as, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, and I'm gonna reiterate, I am, it's my money, yours is mine. I want you to guarantee me, if you go and you make these kind of deals, when things happen that just happened to us, can you go back to this employer and say, "You reneged on your deal. You promised such and such a jobs." I want it written in the contract, not saying I, I know that it can or can't. Can they do that? I mean, and every contract is something you read, you see, I mean, every time I see one, I read everything in it.
Mr. Hoot, can you explain our process?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, Board of County Commissioners, um, our contract that you have in front of you stipulates how this process works and how payments will be made. Payments today, we, we mentioned a number of $38,681. Those are, um, that's a, a guesstimate of what we think that company will pay to the county over the next five years for the investment in the building and the investment in the machinery that's depreciating over that five-year period. So, so what, you know, in terms of clawbacks or paybacks, um, we're going to wait to see what the company pays. And our grant is based on fifty percent of what they end up paying. That's the calculation that we make. That's our policy. That's our guideline that we use. Um, and that's, that's how the, the program works. Is that?
But there's nothing in the contract about guarantee of the number of jobs they're gonna create?
The investment policy.
That's what she's asking.
Yeah, there's nothing in, in the, in the contract. Because our guideline, we just, we just don't have that in, in our investment guidelines.
It's based on a physical asset placed in Lee County.
It's the only place that, that the county can count on a specific return for the investment made in this community. Jobs created, jobs come and go. The county, while there is probably, and, and, well, unquestionably, a residual effect and some kind of a ripple effect in the community, um, for jobs created here, um, there is not a specific return. Only, the only entity that has a specific return is the state of North Carolina through its payroll taxes. We do not collect payroll taxes here in this county. So the only place we collect it from a business is through the investment they make. And it physically ends up on the ground in the building.
And guidelines for the salaries that are paid to their employees, is this?
There's a minimum requirement in, in our investment that it be a fifteen, fifty or better.
Right. I think there's one thing that sort of we overlook, uh, that these companies are certainly hoping to grow, to prosper. And that isn't, indicates that they would hope to increase their numbers of employees tremendously if they're very successful. So I, I, maybe that's the obvious, but it seems like it's almost overlooked in this discussion that surely they, they would like to have that kind of good problem and that we would because our, um, we would all benefit from that type of growth.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Did they not already buy this property though to build on before they came asking for?
The, uh, the property and the building, uh, they bought in 2007 is what, what it is. Two, two, two point one one acres, I think is what we have.
And, you know, I've done some research on their worldwide and they seem to locate with, you know, specialized services in different areas. So I guess this commissioner would have a hard time believing after they've spent the money to, to do that, that they would, if they don't get a tax break, would just pull up and leave. And I think that, some of my colleagues here probably think that if we don't do these deals, that property tax revenue, we wouldn't get. We have absolutely no proof that that wouldn't happen. In fact, uh, when we did the more machinery thing, I, I oppose that because they already spent 1.5 million on the property. That deed was recorded and whatever before they ever came out for things. So, you know, I certainly can understand why they're doing it. And again, if we can't do this for every one of our small businesses.
Building on the hill road that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That they probably stole it. I mean, as far as it was in foot lane and, you know, weeds growing up forever and it's a complete obstacle in Lee County.
My point is they already had purchased it before they came asking for incentives. So, you know.
They brought a whole bunch of, uh, people from.
From one county to the other.
That's right.
Who live in Chatham County probably and go back.
Is there questions?
I guess an answer to her question is, you know, our current policy doesn't address the fact that jobs are lost that we cut it off.
Wasting my money then? I mean, in essence, that you're taking the same taxpayers' money to give them to stay here, but then when they cut the jobs of the very same taxpayers you're taking money from, you're wasting my money. And that's what I'm saying. Can it, can it not be written, this point on, can you not write it in there? If this occurs, and I know that contracts get written this way, if this occurs, you know, barring the, the circumstances that we are in right now is a perfect example. The, the deal's off. We cannot continue, we want to give you, but we cannot continue giving you taxpayers' money when the taxpayers are sitting here wondering how the heck we're gonna pay for what you already got.
Okay. Well, that's something, thank you. Uh, your, your remarks have been recorded and we hear what you're saying and that will be taken into consideration. Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Uh, any further discussion? If not, uh, call for a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution and agreement as presented, please indicate so by saying yes. Yes? No?
No.
I think, uh, can I see your hand? I can't. My, my ear is not that discerning. Four. Your hand, please. One, two, three, four. And opposed? One, two, and an abstention, I believe. Okay. That's the vote. Yes, okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. No, I did not. I couldn't read. Yips.
I didn't speak with my left, I did with my hand.
Okay. Very good. The next item will be, um, the adoption of the 20910 budget ordinance. Uh, Mr. Crumpton will lead us in that discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, budget ordinance is, uh, seventy pages and I'll refrain from reading it. The highlights of it is, uh, revenues and expenditures are balanced at $59,862,318 and the tax rate is set at seventy-five cents, which is the same from last year. Happy to answer any questions from the board or we can discuss, you know, carry on from our previous discussion at, at the workshop.
Okay. Um, would there be any?
Look at the last present.
It's been moved that we approve the budget as presented. Is there any discussion?
Does that include the lesser funds for the library?
As presented.
That is what is in the ordinance, is the, is the reduced amount.
So.
As presented. Is there any discussion?
But I do have a question. If we amend it, is that gonna affect their, what was that term? Maintenance.
Maintenance of effort.
Yeah.
If you raise it, you know, yes, it does affect their maintenance of effort. But we are balanced at the lower level. If you raised it, you'd have to, um, take an, an equal amount from somewhere else in the budget or add fund balance to cover that amount. And I gave Mr. Hayes my, my sheet on the exact amount. It had a note on it, but sixty-seven thousand.
I found this one. We've never had such a paper avalanche up here before, but, uh, that's it. Okay.
But I guess my question was, they don't have to show the state their budget for the year that has a certain amount in it to qualify for that?
Well, they'll, they'll get, um, a percentage of, of the money that they would have gotten. But we factored in what they would lose based on not doing the maintenance of effort.
Would it change if we amended in July? Is a better way of asking questions?
I, is my, yes.
That's been done before.
Yes, it can be amended in July.
Okay.
All right. Call the vote. All in favor of the budget ordinance as presented, please raise your hand. That vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item is appointments to the boards and commissions. And, uh, let me please call your attention to your notebook where we have so many boards and committees that we've tried to compile these and, uh, ask you if you will simply fill it out and vote and give it to Mrs., uh, to, to Gaynell. Uh, she will then tally it. If there are any ties, we will take care of that at such time. But all of these committees, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, would take us quite a while to go through and hand count each one. This is all public information and these, uh, these tallies will, are signed by each one of us. And so therefore, the easiest way and the quickest way is to simply put your vote down for the candidate as she has outlined it. If there's one candidate for a position for a committee, then it's, it's self-evident. If there are two among those who have applied, you vote for two. So, um.
Mr. Hayes, may I mention one thing?
Yes, please.
The first order of business is you need to decide on the number of, um, boards an individual can serve on. Your current policy says that a person can serve on only two boards.
Yes.
We have three individuals, we have two individuals that are already on two boards asking to go on a third board.
Okay.
We have one individual that's on one board and asking to go on three additional boards.
All right.
So you really need to address that policy before you take.
Oh, okay. Well.
How you're gonna handle that.
Yes, I'd like to recommend, I'd like to make the motion that we keep the policy that we have for now and, uh, and entertain any discussion. Uh, because I think this is not the time to encourage people to change that policy and go to, say, three committees. They'll have to make it, if they're on two, they'll have to make a decision if they should wish to get on to another committee. But our, our present policy says you can only be on two committees at any one time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's what I'd like to propose that we stay with at this time. So, any discussion? Okay.
Except when they're in categorical positions. They stay until the replacement is.
Exactly. All in favor of that, please say aye. Aye opposed? So that helps us through that little, that little piece of it. Now, uh, we have our ballots in front of us. Do you wish to discuss them?
I need to address two of the boards. On the Parks and Recreation Commission, you're going to appoint five people. There are two alternates on that board. Neither one of those alternates, uh, asked to serve again. So on your ballot, if you need to designate two of those people as alternates, so if you'll just put an A out beside their names.
The two that we would propose the alternate. Okay.
Also, on the Rest Home and Nursing Home Advisory Board, you have two vacancies. Um, per statute, um, when a rest home or a nursing home makes a recommendation, you have to give that individual first priority. And in this case, there was a recommendation from one of the facilities. So you will need to.
Yeah.
Make sure that that gentleman is.
And you have an asterisk by that name.
Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I, I have a question though. With, with that recommendation, can they serve as the alternate or the primary?
Either one.
Okay, so.
You just need to designate which one.
Okay, all right. That, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, if we're ready to turn these in, Mrs. Lee will take them from us. Please, please sign them and we will turn them in and, uh, she'll do a vote.
She'll tally everything.
She'll tally everything, um, sign these and keep in mind, of course, that these are public and, uh, available. All right. Okay, got a couple more. Just take your time. Uh, that's what these are for.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a short break?
Huh?
Can we take a short break?
Yes. Uh, if, if it's. Yeah, this has been a long one. Yes, let's take a five-minute, uh, stretch. Thank you. Okay? I'd like to call the meeting back to order now as we come to the final term of a very heavy agenda. The next item is the appointment to Voluntary Agriculture Advisory Board, Susan Conlin. Mrs. Conlin, would you come and speak to us? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hayes and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to come back before you again to speak about the Voluntary Ag District, which you know, Mr. Reeves, you adopted in September of 2008. Real quick.
Right.
And I appreciate that. And as part of that ordinance, you are required to set up a Voluntary Agricultural Advisory Board. And since then, since September, Tommy Brooks and myself have been going around the county, working with people, recruiting people to serve on this advisory board. And we have gone to the Farm Bureau, we've gone to FSA, we've gone to our farm groups, the busy, business and civic organizations. We've addressed, we've sat at dinners and lunches around the county, talking to people about serving on this board. We've done news releases, and there was an editorial. We've done radio programs. We've done just about everything we could, and we've harassed a couple of you to start and find us some advisory board members. We want to get some more input into this board, and so we have tried every which way we have could possibly do to find these members. And as a result, we've had over sixteen applicants to come in for you to review for this positions, for the advisory board. I'm glad to tell you that at least one or two applicants are from each of the townships in Lee County, and that's what we were striving hard for, to get one or two applicants in the, from each of those townships. In fact, one township has four people who applied to serve on the agricultural advisory board. Cooperative Extension and Soil and Water, through Tommy Brooks's office, we are collaborating to support the formation of this board. We will be working with the board to establish their policies, their procedures, the procedures for allowing people to come into the voluntary agricultural districts, all in the, in the effort to help to protect our agricultural operations here in Lee County. So tonight, Tommy and I come before you. We're asking you to appoint this inaugural advisory, agricultural advisory board in accordance with your policy, and we would appreciate that, and we would look forward to working with those that you appoint, hopefully with our first meeting coming in July.
Okay. Will there be some questions? Questions?
Are there any of these applicants that serve on more boards than this, than our policy permits?
I think, would you wish to address that? But we, you know, have reaffirmed our policy, so that...
Right. There are a couple of individuals that are serving on current boards, and I believe one individual has asked to serve on several boards. If you noticed in your ballot, I believe his name appears on several sections.
Page 270.
Yes, one individual said that where the conflict existed, that he would be happy to leave one board because he wanted to be on this one so much. And the other will have to make that decision, I suppose, over the next thirty days or so, as to which board he would most, which two he would most wish to serve on. But that would keep us in compliance with our policy. Is there, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Got one here that's current, serving on two boards.
Three.
Current, serving on three boards. Do we even need to consider him, that person?
How, I don't...
I mean, how would you...
Yeah, I'm...
I appreciate him putting it, you know, I appreciate that.
Well, that person will have to, won't that individual have to make a judgment, make a decision to serve, can't serve on but two. So he'll have to resign from one. That was what I was trying to suggest. That decision will be his to me, where he wishes to serve, all things equal.
But, but won't we be circumventing our own policy that we just voted on though? If, if we go ahead and put him on this board, knowing that he's sitting on two already? Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, that, maybe we need to amend this motion, and it says with this exception, this, any individual that presently serves on two will need to make the decision, say, within thirty days, as to how he would wish to, to serve.
So...
So, with time, you're saying...
So by July 1st, they would have to resign from any other boards?
Yeah.
What if, what if they don't? I mean, I, I'm just...
That's, that's, that's not our problem.
Then, then they'll vacate this appointment. Okay, okay. That's what I was trying to get clarification on. If they, if they would not resign from...
If he accepts this, when he's going to vacate one of the others?
Or, or lose this appointment.
Accepts this.
Okay, okay.
It's automatic. You've already made it clear, it's automatic, he can't serve the two. So, if he gets elected, July 1st, he has to be off of one of the boards or give this one back. So, Chris.
I think we all have a sense of that now. So all in favor of this motion to accept, to appoint residents who apply to the agricultural advisory board, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you very much. That was a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves, would you like to recognize him?
Who's that?
Mr. Lamont.
Yes, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Lamont, you got any comment?
We wish to honor you, sir, for you have, you've been a soldier at pulling this committee together, and as we count the tallies on the other committees, welcome.
I certainly appreciate everything, Mr. Chairman, the board members. There was a lot of work over the last four years put into this voluntary agriculture district. There's going to be a lot more work to do to pull the farm preservation side of it together. And working with the colleagues I had on the State Agriculture Committee in Raleigh, they were commissioners from all over North Carolina. And they were committed to their counties of doing the same thing. And I think I remember talking to Joe Zablina, who is one of the heads in the Agriculture Department. He wanted to know, just as soon as we got our BAD and, adopted and everything, he was elated when, when I went back and told him, when we had that meeting following the adoption of that. And he said that this would be one of the mainstays for our county, as well as all the other counties around us, because that is one of the prime things that BRAC is looking for, is, is available land, green space, trails like we have worked on for the last eight years, and what you're working on now. And I look forward to working with the Agriculture Department, because I, really, that's a lot of what I've done, you know, ever since I was big enough to sit on a tractor. So I think a lot of, lot of folks here on this board can relate to that. You just, you just stay with, some shape, form, fashion, you will stay with, and I look forward to it.
Thank you very much, and welcome back. It's nice to see you again, looking so well. Okay, Mrs. Lee has the tally now, and she's going to speak to us about that.
Okay. The ADA Committee, the new appointee is Angela Davenport. Airport Authority is Thomas Dawsonback. The CCC Board of Trustees is R.D. Hyatt. Environmental Affairs Board, Jim Foster and Ray Martin. The Board of Health, the optometrist is Dr. Lauren Williams, who was reappointed, and the general public is Dr. Kelly Falk. The Jury Commission is Harold York. The Library Board of Trustees is Susan Alexander, Christine Altenberger, Mary Bell, Mary Bell Dias, and Barbara Turner. The Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Board, Dr. Bud Marchant and Richard Schlatten...
Schlatten.
Parks and Rec Commission, the two alternates are Justin Coggins and Mark Klein. The three regular members will be James Norton, George Wilburg, and Edgar Underwood. The Rest Home and Nursing Home Advisory Board, Mr. Leon Hooker is the alternate, and the current alternate, Lavinia McKeever, will move up into the regular position. The Sanford Planning Board is Ronnie Turner. The Sand Hills Mental Health, Toni Ransberger. Senior Services Advisory Board, Woody Beale, Alice Beardsley, Reverend Jason Davenport, Karen Odom of Oldham, Esther Saller, and Mary Upchurch. The Transportation Advisory Board is Robert McCarthy. The Sanford Board of Adjustments, William Vogel, and the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Brenda Williams. Any questions? Good job. Now I'm seeing...
Now, could you make me a copy of that?
Yes, I will.
That'll be in our minutes, of course, and we might all wish to have a copy of the final tally, if that's possible.
If you can read my scribble.
Yeah, not tonight, but as soon as you can.
I'll get your copy. Thank you.
I'm just excited that we had so many people sign up this year to get involved on the boards.
This is the first time in several years that we've had as many appropriations as we've had.
Great.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consideration of meeting dates for July and August. And if you'll turn to page 274 in your, in your book, the recommendation is to hold in the month of July, Monday, July the 20th at 6:00, and August, Monday, August 17th at 6:00 p.m. And I'll put that in the form of a motion. Would there be some discussion?
Typically not after we pass the budget. We won't have this main budget amendments in July, will we? It depends on what the state does.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just trying to...
Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to item H, which we pulled, and this is the bid for carpet at Lee, and that was item F originally on pages nineteen and twenty of your book. Go back there. And Mrs. Shook, this is your, your comment.
Yeah, I, I did receive a call from somebody that submitted one, and I guess, I'm just asking because I want to know, first of all, if we have a policy when county bid forms and when there are sealed bids, and if so, what's the amount and how does it work? So the concerns I got from this person, and it's a he-said, she-said thing, so I fully realize that, but I'm passing off because it did raise some red flags with me, is that for this, his interpretation was that he was contacted, asking to bid on this, he thought they wanted to know, you know, if they had enough money in the county... they wanted to know, you know, if they had enough money in the county to be able to do this. So, this wasn't a formal bid, he put on, they're not a formal bid, request a county bid form. So, that's my concern. First of all, do we have a policy that if we're looking to outside vendors for something, that if it's over $10,000 or whatever, we get a sealed bid?
We only get the sealed bids on formal bids, which in this particular case, this would not be the dollar threshold for a formal bid.
Which is?
Ninety-nine thousand.
Ninety thousand.
I guess, is this board comfortable with that? You know, because we're dealing with a lot of local people, you know.
Well, and sometimes.
Thirty thousand is a lot of money.
And then sometimes when you have a, a group of vendors like this, who right now are fighting tooth and nail for every dime of business they can get, you know, it raises the question that, you know, you don't want to have any questions. So, you know, it would probably be advisable that we tighten that up, you know, probably permanently. Need to do that through a policy.
I would request that, you know, the request for proposal, be very specific, you know, how many square feet, in this case for carpet, you know, what's the grade of carpet, you know, product-to-product type of, of things. Is this going to be awarded automatically to the low bidder, you know, so they know exactly what they're doing. And it was my, my interpretation that, you know, that was not done here. So I was a little uncomfortable with that, but I don't want to get into micromanaging, I just want to have good policies so that everybody is, is on a level playing field when it comes to bidding on county projects.
I agree. And I think that's something that.
Well, it's going to work if the, if the participants are seeking the information on how the process works beforehand. If you got a policy and they don't read it, you haven't done yourself any good. I enjoy the idea of having a policy made available to anyone who wants to participate, but it's still incumbent upon them to read it.
Well, the policy, the policy would be on our departments, you know, if there's something that's over $10,000 or $20,000, then it has to be on a county bid form, you know, rather than just somebody calling and saying, "Back soon," you know.
I hear what you're saying, I want to hear what I'm saying. Sometimes people call when they have solid grapes and complaint. If we put a policy in place and make it available for the public to review, that ought to help relieve some of the tension or some of the concern. It's open for everybody, and if you got questions, you can call in advance, they will participate. I understand what you're going on.
I think we need to let the county manager know, do something, review and figure out, you know, a uniform process.
Simply.
And I don't think that we should always be like the state is, or as low as bidding is up, that we end up shooting someone there.
Well, it's as low as possible, but isn't that?
That's right.
Discretionary.
Mr. Crumpton, would you look into this and come back to us at a future meeting with some, with a policy recommendation, if you believe that something can be approved here?
Yes, sir.
A formal bid sheet from the county.
Okay.
Don't you think?
What's that?
A formal bid sheet that will?
That lists the specs down so that somebody's not bidding what normally a $3 a square foot piece of carpet against somebody who's bidding a $5, you know, that type thing. So, however detailed that needs to be put, so everybody knows what they're bidding on.
Okay, I believe we have the piece that's been pulled, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion that we approve the staff recommendations to approve the low bid to Southern Carpet and Interiors at a cost of $36,433. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? There's no opposition, so that is approved unanimously. And last but not least, we have a item I, budget amendment, and Mrs. Minter's going to speak with us about that.
Good afternoon, evening. Sorry. You have, should have in front of you, or in your package, is a revised budget amendment. We did have, after some review, a couple more items to add today, one being an additional amount for medical examiner, that is where we are billed for autopsies that are done on Lee County residents that fund their death, and it's our request to predict when and what kind.
How about the items in our consent agenda, right?
There was a revised budget amendment.
We have a revised one, but they're both pretty similar, except for a couple things.
Is it in our manual or our package?
It was handed out.
It's like this.
It should be in your additional items packet, right there.
Here's it?
There it is, that's it.
There you go.
We also added a line item for EDC incentives to explain that. Last year during the budget process, we were given the contractual amounts. I checked with Bob Hutes because we had had a couple years where we had not paid out the full amounts because of investments not being, hitting their marks. I called and said, "What, do you actually anticipate us paying out?" He gave me a number. Some of those came in below their contractual amounts, but above what he estimated. So, we needed to up that to cover the last incentive to be paid out this year. Nothing is exceeding their contractual amounts, okay? And then we had to add some additional funds for, so we had to move some money between departments within solid rates. And since it exceeded 5,000, it was beyond the scope that the county manager could approve. So that's been added and figured out. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have had on the revised or the original budget amendment.
Any questions?
My only question was the debit credit type of transaction with the fire departments. I, I just don't understand the concept.
Okay. We have to budget the collection fees that we can keep collecting motor vehicle taxes for the fire districts. And because it has to run through as an expenditure, we cannot be over on the expenditure line above the budget ordinance.
Okay.
So therefore, you know, it's hard to predict how many people are going to pay and how much they're going to pay. So, certain ones were running over this year, so we just had to go in and budget revenues to cover those expenditures. And those revenues are there, those collection fees are there and to cover.
So this is actually going into their fire district budgets?
No. It is, but it's money that gets paid back to the county for their collection, for us collecting those motor vehicle taxes for them.
They don't really write us a check.
No, we just move it.
Okay. And this is done just once a year at the?
No, it's done every month as we collect those motor vehicle taxes.
Motor vehicles. It's done every month.
But it doesn't show up how much we're going to be over until we get towards the end of the year.
And we send them checks every month from?
We send them until they meet their budget quota. In most cases, that happens in January, usually the latest February, except for situations like we had with Sanford this year, where we had a major taxpayer pays it late. So they got their last check probably in first part of June.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think probably an approval is in order here, so I'd like to move that we approve this budget amendment as presented by Mrs. Minter. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That approves unanimously, thank you very much. And now to the manager's report, Mr. Crumpton.
And Miss Minter, can you just go ahead and go right into the May financial report while she's at the mic?
We have for you the monthly financial report for May 2009. The good news is, we have collected above, beyond our full tax revenues for the year, and we are at now 0.05% higher than we were for the same timeframe last year. And a lot of that is related to prior year taxes, not necessarily the current year, but where we had turned over several of our prior year taxes to, I believe it's ZACIS, for collection, and they have come through on some of that, so it did push our collections up above budget now. As far as expenditure goes, or other revenues, we are still running extremely far behind on sales taxes, permits and fees, and investment income through May 31st. In reviewing expenditures, the target is 91.67%. We have very few departments exceeding that at this point. Economic development was still over because of incentives being paid out. Debt service is at 97.74%, and that's due strictly to the timing of the payments. And then agencies that are at 100% are those that are, receive their quarterly appropriations, and those have already been paid out for the final quarter. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So, so since the revenues are up, would that have changed the collection rate for these fire districts that really, if what the budgets they presented, wouldn't have been a tax increase?
No. And Dwayne and I just had this discussion about that, and the concern there is, even though Pilgrim's Pride, for instance, has paid, it's still, you have an ongoing concern for future years. So, you know, the question is, will they be able to pay their bill next year? Are we at the end of the bad times yet? So, you know, John and I have talked, Mr. Crumpton, excuse me, and I have talked about it, and feel like we still need to err on the side of being conservative to make sure that we don't push it and this economy still not rebound yet, and then we end up with more districts in a situation. In addition to that, we are limited to what we are allowed to project it at, it has to be no more than what you've collected this year. And so, so, I mean, we could revisit it if the board directs us to do so, but I would probably recommend.
Anything over, anything over the budget goes into their fund balance that we hold.
And this is next year.
And actually, it's applied towards the next year's budget, so they'll get, they'll get some, they'll get some money that, you know, will, from this year, that will apply towards, you know, that they'll get for next year that's above and beyond what is in the budget.
Is it a balance?
Yes.
I guess my, my concern still is, you know, some of those rates were like two and hundredths of a penny. And when you take a look at somebody who has $100,000 tax base and $80,000, you keep that rate the same, you're taking major money from their operating budgets. And, you know, I wish you all could see, all of these budgets, they're lean and mean. And so that's why I'm just saying that, you know, you said revenues were in a little bit, and if it would have changed some of those collection rates just a little bit, so that they could have gotten the amount they were requesting. I'm going to lose you with that tonight.
I think our big concern was going into next year, you know, we really don't know what's happening. You know, the folks have just started struggling, you know, and we could see our tax collection rate go down. If it wasn't for prior year taxes, we'd be, we'd be in a world of hurt right now. So, we decided it was, it was, we did that in our budget too, in our general fund budget. We kept, we could have raised the, the collection percentage up, but I didn't feel comfortable doing that, given what we know that's out there. So, you know, it, it's just a conservative, conservative way, and, you know, after getting burned this year, I would prefer to stay.
Surprised.
Pretty conservative.
Okay, any, any other comments on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now to commissioners' comments. Mr. Crumpton, did you have anything else you wanted to?
No, sir, I think I've talked enough tonight.
Mr. Pascal? Mrs. Shook?
I have one question. When did we start giving Spanish versions to our Lee County government website? And why are we doing that?
I'm not, I'm not sure what, what you're speaking of.
You go to the Lee County website, the upper right corner, it says Espanol. You can click on that, and the whole thing is in Spanish.
It's translated?
The whole website! And I think that should?
I haven't clicked that on, so I haven't seen it.
Because I, for one, feel very strongly, if somebody's coming here for services, they can at least learn to speak English. Yeah, I, I, I was just a little, and I discovered that today because I was actually looking for some kind of policy we have. My policies aren't online, I couldn't find it, but I happened to click on that by mistake, and all of a sudden, I have this Spanish version of the Lee County website.
Famous version? I'm, I haven't clicked on that one on, I apologize, but.
And I want to know why it is and what the cost was to convert it to Spanish, and, you know, whether it's something?
Well, I'll find out what the cost was. The webpage is going through a major overhaul right now, so we haven't been making a lot of changes at, at Kyle's request, so, you know, if there's some things that aren't updated on, on the webpage, it's, it's because we're going through a transformation, and hopefully by the end of the month, we'll be able to start updating things again.
Oh, isn't about 20% of the population of Lee County now Hispanic?
I think it's.
Or more?
More than that, 22.
Would that have something to do with making it available on the website? I think that's probably just.
I don't know, I don't know who does the conversion.
I'm willing to approve the change on the website. Unless, vote on that, get it out the way.
You serious?
I am very serious.
Okay, let's do it.
You're voting to approve to have a Spanish version?
That's correct, that's already there.
All in, any, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
All right, so, so be it, let the record show. Thank you, Mrs. Shook. Mrs. Dowrumpf, can you top that?
Well, I don't know. I, I just want to say, and I'm not going to name them all, because I'll, I'll leave somebody out inadvertently, but I just wanted to congratulate all the graduates in Lee County that walked across the stage this week. Mr. Crumpton and I were proud parents of graduates last week, and that's a big accomplishment for our young people, and congratulations to the parents, because raising teenagers is tough, and we got them across the stage. Congratulations to the graduates.
Mr. Allen?
I'm just sitting, I thought of something, I want to ask the manager. Air conditioning important, senior citizen.
Mr. Spidey, would you like to address that, since I asked you about that?
Because I was asking about it.
Of course, yes, sir, of course.
The senior citizen building.
In the, in the dining room area where they do the dance.
Is the air conditioning working?
Yes. Yes, now you've got a thermostat control now. I don't know, somebody's tampering with it at night, when is the problem in the corner?
The dance, that dance last summer night.
We can check on it, but it's thermostat controlled, so you've got approximately, probably three units that serve that area, but it is thermostat controlled, possibly one of the thermostats may have nothing turned down properly.
I think the senior citizen thought we were tightening the belt suit if we turned the air?
No, no, we.
No, I got blamed for doing that. I got blamed for ordering to do that.
We have tried to tighten the belt, you have, but, no, but I will be glad to check on it.
Yes, sir, I went out, I went out there after that call came in, and it, the, the air conditioning is working. Part of the problem is when they set up for the dance, they leave the doors open to bring the band in, cold air rushes out, and then when they close the doors, it's, you know, it's, it, it never cools back down until after they leave. So, we have, we have to work something there.
Can I say? Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir, move to the.
I have, I have one thing to report to you before we go. I'll make it quick. The Mid-Carolina Workforce Consortium group has met on several occasions, and we have a good outcome. I think I had mentioned to you earlier that there was a, a move to transition that from the COG, which is located in Cumberland County, to CCC, to bring that here into Lee County, which, since the college serves three of the four counties in the consortium, being Chatham, Lee, and Hernit, and the other four counties, Sampson, which is not served by CCC. But at any rate, it was felt for various reasons that a change was needed. Personalities, work methods, what have you. We got into that, and everybody has had a good, I think, a good say, good deliberations, and I think that the outcome is going to be one that will allow this move to go forward over the coming year. It's going to be guided through the state, hopefully by Mr. Daniel Giddens with the North Carolina Division of Workforce Development, in tandem with Mr. Tony Lett, who is our own, and who is the chairman of the board, and we wanted to make sure that the board weighed in as an equal partner in this process, along with Tim McNeil, who's the chairman of the Hernit County Board of Commissioners, and he's the, kind of the CEO of this. And we, we got it right, I think. Time will tell, but I think that it's a train that's moving along, and I wanted to make sure that you knew about this, and felt that it was a, a good piece of work done that will serve especially Lee County, that's my primary interest, but of course, very quickly, the other three counties as well. So that's my comment to you. I was the holdout signatory of the document, which sort of puts this process in motion, and I will be signing that tomorrow as a part of that executive group, just as you are on different committees. I, I have to either sign or back off, and I'm, I'm going to go ahead because I think... I, I have to either sign or back off, and I'm, I'm going to go ahead, because I think good work, good, good efforts have been made by all, and I think you will, you would be pleased, and we'll be pleased with the outcome as we move forward.
Before you finish-
Yes, sir.
I would like to commend you on your letter and your position on that subject matter. I read your letter with great interest, and appreciated your position in the county.
Thank you very much. Now, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Reeves to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.